Okay. Call to order the city council's special meeting for Monday, December 23rd, 2024. Please rise for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, Amanda.
Mark Bitner.
Here.
Shannon Derby.
Here.
Bill Leclerc.
Here.
Doug Brand.
Here.
Tim Petrie.
Here.
Bonnie Shimalunas.
Here.
Scott Stackmesser.
Here.
Darla Leclerc. And Adam Husky is absent.
We're skipping number four because Adam did not request to participate remotely. It's anticipated he will be here about late. So on to number five, public hearing. We have one of those tonight. It's a public hearing on an application for a conditional use permit for assisted living, congregate housing, and a residential care facility for the elderly located at 2500 Garfield Street in the IPF Institutional Public Facilities District submitted by NHS One Hamilton Drive LLC, applicant and owner. Greg.
Yes, this kind of a bit of old business in as much as this addresses the Northland Lodge facility at what was the Two Rivers Community Hospital a long time ago. It was the, this portion of it was originally granted a conditional use permit in 2003 by the city. It has operated at the time it was Rice Enterprises that had purchased and continued to operate Hamilton Home as a skilled nursing center and basically redeveloped the old hospital into an assisted living facility that we know today as Northland Lodge. Along the way, several years back, the entity that is the applicant tonight, NHS One Hamilton Drive LLC, took ownership of the facility. And apparently just in November, early December of this year, as they were doing due diligence related to some financing, recognized that the conditional use permit granted by the city was specific to actually TR Real Estate LLC on Ballard Road in Appleton, which was the real estate ownership entity associated with Bryce Healthcare. And it was granted exclusively to TR Real Estate LLC, not transferable, not assumable. So as the result, the current ownership entity filed the application for a conditional use permit, essentially maintaining the same conditions that were in existence, have been in existence since 2003. Gosh, over 22, I'm sorry, over 21 years now. And that is what is up for public hearing this evening. You've got the proposed conditional use permit in your packets. And this does come with a recommendation for approval from the plan commission.
Okay, thank you, Greg. This is a public hearing, so there will be three calls. If you wish to talk about this particular public hearing item, please step up to the podium on your left and state your name and address for the record. I am now opening up the first call. Seeing no one, I will close the first call and open up the second call. Seeing no one, I'll close the second call and open up the third and final call. Seeing no one, I will close the third call and bring that back to council. Looking for a motion then to approve the conditional use permit.
I'll make the motion to approve the, whatever it said.
Conditional use permit.
Yeah, that's it, conditional use permit, sorry.
Great, looking for a second. Thank you, Shannon. Any council discussion? Yes, Mark.
Has anything changed in the operating standards or regulations for this type of nursing home at the government or state level?
Oh, Lord, I honestly don't know the answer to that question. There may very well have been changes during the last 22 years. And insofar as they relate to local zoning though, which, you know, the conditional use permit primarily addresses or exclusively addresses, not aware of anything that would shake out there. But I really can't answer that question as far as federal and state regulations that impact on their operation.
I recognize there's zoning requirements.
Yes.
But I just wondered if there's any.
That I can't really speak to.
Anyone else? Okay, this will be a roll call vote. Amanda.
Shannon Derby.
Aye.
Bill Leclerc.
Aye.
Doug Brand.
Tim Petrie.
Aye.
Bonnie Shimalunas.
Aye.
Scott Stackmesser.
Aye.
Darla Leclerc.
Aye.
Mark Bitner.
Aye.
All in favor.
Call for that. On to number six, input from the public. If you wish to address the council about something that is on this agenda or perhaps a future agenda item, please step up to the podium on your left and state your name and address for the record. Please be aware that you typically have three minutes to address the council, which can be waived by the council president if warranted. The council may ask questions of you about the topic but cannot discuss issues raised or make any decisions since the topic is not a posted agenda item. Issues raised may be referred to the city manager or city staff for research and possible further action. Anyone, input from the public? Seeing nothing, we'll go on to number seven, council communications, letters and other communications from citizens. Yes, Darla?
Yeah, it's just a couple of weeks ago. I was going to report on this, but I wanted to see the outcome. I had a citizen get in touch with me because the home next door was basically turned into a home business and it had to do with construction. So there was light equipment over there and at one instance, and I saw the video on this, a front end loader came in and dumped a whole bunch of soil and what have you. And I thought that was not really nice for the neighbors. So anyways, so I've talked to Greg about it and I've talked to the PD and everything has gone through, through the correct channels. And I know that, I know that just a couple of days ago, Adam Down in inspections did send them out a letter after talking to him a couple of times. So there is movement on that.
There has been notice, notification to the property under an apparent zoning violation with the indication that if it is to continue, there could be enforcement action taken. Actually, that one and then the one I'd have had a contact on that also has a violation in town with industrial zoning where there's a commercial enterprise taking place with outdoor storage too. Visible along the. Follow up as well.
The city responds to these things, you know, and I think we do it in a timely manner. I was just really happy with everybody's help.
Excellent. Sorry. Anyone else? Yes, Bonnie.
I was asked about the assessment. And, you know, all people want to know is why? Why did their property go up and what basis and so forth? Then I was wondering, do you think people could send their questions in? I don't know how you pay the entity that does the assessing. Would it be cheaper if, if people could communicate with the city and then you could send questions either weekly or monthly? I don't think it would be, you know, after a while it's going to die off and let them answer.
There is direct contact information. I'm not going to necessarily vouch for the quality of customer service by the assessing firm, but there, there is a number and often you get voicemail indicating you will get a call back. I believe people do get those calls back. We haven't contracted with them for office hours here. But certainly, yeah, even though there was open book and board review, I think 68 people came into open book, three to board a review, two or three. People can ask questions at any point during the year. Obviously, it would only help them with next year's assessment and the next tax bill. But.
Did you give, could you, where would the number be found? Do you know it now or should they look online somewhere?
We can post it on Facebook, actually.
Okay.
We can, we can likewise email it to all council members.
Okay.
I mean, the goal is to be assessing at market value. I think our overall assessments were at 101%, 101. some percent. But a lot of questions, obviously, a lot of variables out there. Yep. And you can look up anybody's assessment and anybody's bill, I can vouch for that. So, yeah. And sometimes it's small things, like there was somebody that did a contact the council last week. And I don't recall if I copied the council on my response, but the question was about lower basement level as habitable space. And if you don't have two means of egress, you know, either two sets of stairs or stairway and an egress window, it can't be counted as, excuse me, finished livable space. And that, just by way of example, that can make a big difference. One simple, one simple error as far as the status of that space. So I will see that we publicize that.
Yes? Yes, Doug?
I know we all got the email from the concerned citizen regarding our city manager form of government, that they were very much in favor of it and that it's a much more efficient government. I was at several holiday gatherings the last week or so and overwhelming opinion of the people that I spoke with was to, there's absolutely no reason why we should consider a change, that this is. They were concerned about having to hire a city administrator on top of a mayor so you would have double salaries and that would cause our tax. So they were very, very, very happy with what we're doing right now and wanted to continue.
Thank you. Anyone else? Yes, Mark.
I received the same letter, I think, as everyone did. I also was contacting several people over the weekend through those parties and going to church. They were very much committed to the government we have right now and the background, the education and finding somebody qualified and capable of the educational experience to take.
Thank you. Anyone else? I have a shout out to Public Works. Matt should be happy. This isn't a bad thing. I was out in about Sunday afternoon and many people were thankful for the plowing the city did for the big snowstorm we had last week sometime. So I know you usually get phone calls of people saying it's not going well. I heard a lot of people saying it went well. So I don't know if you've heard the same thing or not, but I've, I had maybe 10 or 15 people say, it went really well, thank you guys. So shout out to Public Works. Anything else? Seeing nothing else, we'll go on to number eight, council reports from boards, commissions, and committees. Anyone have anything?
Not much is happening with Main Street or EAB, yeah.
At the end of the year, stuff.
This isn't a council committee, but I'm a member of the Cool City Crime Prevention Committee. And we volunteered at the Shop for a Cop event the other night. I believe there were 40 children affected by. Fantastic. Officer Propsen does a great job organizing all the volunteers and everything. So it was a bigger than ever and a great success.
Awesome.
Shout out to the PD for that.
That's amazing. Yeah, that's always a cool thing to see. Anyone else? Yes, Mark.
Just for public information, there's a Room Tax Committee meeting on Monday, the 30th, at four o'clock, right here in the council center.
You know, this meeting ended up formatted like a regular meeting. Normally, the special meeting is a work session and I'm sitting here thinking maybe this isn't a bad idea because it does give council one more opportunity and where a lot of things shared. So with, among yourselves and with the community, both here and watching. So if there aren't any objections, maybe we'll continue to format the work. The special, not single topic special meetings, but the normal, the work sessions, that way.
Yeah, it doesn't usually take that much extra time.
No.
Okay, on to number, sorry, on to number nine, formal items. Under A, we have consideration of an amendment to the city's personnel policy manual regarding holiday pay.
This is timely because it's meant to take effect for the new year and impact all holidays in the new year. Amanda has worked on it with Jim Carroll, our labor attorney from Beulah Vetter. I'll let her introduce it and walk through it. In other words, I'll shut up for a change and let the court speak to it.
So this change kind of was brought to my attention because we have very many departments working different hours. So during summer, we have some of our departments working 10 hours, some working nine hours. We still have some departments working eight hours. And kind of the way it's always been done was whatever hours you're working is what you receive for holiday pay. So if you're working 10 hours, you always receive 10 hours of holiday pay. And just to keep it consistent between all of our employees, we figured we would put all of your holiday pay in a bank. So every employee would receive their eight hours of holiday pay for the eight holidays that are recognized by the city. So they would receive 64 hours of holiday pay annually in a bank. The employees must use that on the eight recognized holidays. Per our personnel policy, you also get two floating holidays. We did change them to personal days. We're going to now put them back into the floating holiday idea. And then if you do work those different hour shifts, you can use those floating holiday hours to offset whatever hours that is. So you, you know, Fourth of July falls, say on a Tuesday, you're a Public Works employee, you work four tens, you get your eight hours of holiday pay. You can pull from that floating holiday pay those extra two hours to offset that or vacation or comp time or however you want to do that. That way, the employees will all be consistent with receiving eight hours of holiday pay for each holiday. And then along with this, it will also help with tracking of holiday pay. So right now, there's no good way of tracking if an employee works a holiday when they're actually taking that holiday pay down the road. So again, in summer, we have a lot of employees that end up working on one of our holidays because of our special events here in the city. So then we know that this employee is using that holiday because they worked at this time down the road. And then that way, we know, we can track when they're using that. But same with this all in one bank as it has been is if they don't use up all of the hours in the bank for whatever reason, because of those extra floating days in there, that it will be forfeited. So you won't get paid out for it.
Likewise, I think the recent change, first with the summer hour schedule for city hall, which council's now approved as the regular schedule, that was the most recent time it came up because sometimes you, if a holiday falls on a Friday, now you have someone working four hours. The intent is four hours, in that instance, four hours, we get charged to their holiday bank. That would leave half of a typical day in that bank. But more often than not, just focusing on the city hall group, the holidays are going to fall on nine hour scheduled workdays. And there is a provision in there, if you end up working the entirety of your scheduled shift on a holiday, well, you get time and a half for the hours worked. You can either take your eight hours holiday pay or leave it in the bank and use it for personal leave at another time. However, if you work less than the full day, you get overtime for the hours worked and the policy provides you would get your eight hours holiday pay. I think it's a nice improvement. It'll, it'll get confused. We, back in the old days when we had other, we had unions in addition to police and fire. For example, we had, I think it was a grievance with AFSMI where people on a holiday, employees on a holiday worked 10 or 12 hours. And the argument was, well, I get double time and a half for the first eight and then I drop down to time and a half. No, you get eight hours holiday pay and you get paid time and a half for the hours worked. So in other words, there's always ways human beings can interpret policies differently. But this seems cleaner. It does add a separate category of holiday pay on the time accounting and that should be for the better.
Any questions for Amanda or Greg?
And I think, thank Amanda for her work put in on this with, with the labor attorney and working with the department had some.
If you're getting these personal days, let's, you're just getting regular pay, right? You're not getting time and a half for that.
That's, that's straight pay. Yeah, the only time you get time and a half is to get work, is if you work overtime. That's either paid overtime in that pay period or comp time, which now you have to use your comp time within the year.
The reason I'm asking, because like the example, I do wish there were more examples given in, in a change like this. But there was one example. But there was one example I saw where they said, if you were working a holiday and you wanted to put personal hours to, like, for example, if you're working 10 hours and then you get eight hours of holiday pay. And then if you wanted to add your personal time, I don't know if I'm getting confused about that. You could, but if you're not getting time and a half on a personal day, does that mean that you would not get time and a half when you're working your holiday and you substitute your personal time for that?
If you're not working that holiday and you're just getting eight hours of holiday pay, but you want to bring it up to 10, so, so basically you're not short two hours in that pay cycle, right, that just comes in it at straight time out of that bank.
And then actually, holiday pay, what, what you really mean is if you get the holiday, if you want to make up your Christmas day, for example, if you work on Christmas day, do you just get eight hours of regular pay for that?
Correct. Yep. You get time and a half for hours worked on the holiday. But your, your so-called holiday pay that you would have gotten paid if you sat at home because it's day off or, or came to work, that's, that's still eight hours straight pay.
If you do have off, what I'm not, the other thing I'm not sure about, why can't they just get paid their holiday pay on that day? I mean, why do they have to put it in a bank to be used later?
All I thought was, again, with the variable schedules we have, for some people, when, when a holiday falls, you might be working a regular day that's eight hours, nine hours, 10 hours, in a few cases, four hours. And this way, everybody gets the same number of paid holiday hours. It's more equitable, I guess.
So I mean, if you have the holiday off, why can't you just get paid the eight hours? I mean, why does it have to go back?
If you're working four ten, your pay would go down. And it can, it can, because let's say you're Public Works in the summer. You're working Monday through Thursday, 10-hour days. And Fourth of July falls on Thursday. Well, great, here's your eight hours holiday pay, but your, your regular week would be two hours short, your paycheck would go down. And that's fine. But if you want, you can pull two hours out of that bank, which now has your two personal days that you've always had in it.
Yeah.
But you had to use those as full days previously. Now they can be used in quarter hour increments. So you can, you know, hey, it's really nifty, you're working a four-day week, but you're also, you've got the ability when a holiday falls that you're not getting shorted. Haven't been getting shorted historically, but people have been getting that extra two hours pay. And that raises some equity questions.
Anyone else have any questions? Yes, Doug.
Greg just answered my first question. But I'm wondering, can somebody choose to get paid forty? Falls on Friday? Back on that. So the minimum.
I have a question about comp time. We used to do that, or it was kind of like at the discretion of your boss. Is that allowed at all anymore? Let's say that you come in on a Monday and you have to leave two hours early because of the doctor's appointment. Can you then work, you know, work an extra two day, or not two days, two hours on a different day?
Flex time.
Flex time, okay.
Yeah, we kind of leave that up to the department heads to work with their departments on their needs of.
Okay.
Flexing of hours has to.
Same week.
Okay.
Stay in the same. Employees won't be able to carry it from year to year, as had been the case.
Does it roll, right now?
It rolls up to, well, it was rolling, you could roll 240 hours over. And that's what we can't have. So now, at the end of this year, they had to be down to 160.
I'm wondering, is there a cap on how many hours you, that could be part of the comp time?
It was compliant, the current, the, the past policy was compliant with Federal Fair Labor Standards Act. It does pose some issues in other areas, but it was FLSA compliant. So yeah, so again, at the end, it was 240. As of the end of this year, that cap on rollover is 160. At the end of 2025, it will be 80. At the end of 2026, it'll be zero.
But any new comp time earned in 2024 cannot be rolled over. We put a stop to rolling that over.
And earn comp time in the month of December, extra hours worked in December, have to be paid as overtime. So we don't have anyone inadvertently earning comp time they can't take off in that final month of the year. So we can provide finance, personal finance committee with a sort of a snapshot at year end as to how that cumulative bank of comp time has been brought down. Because that was, that was a big policy change and a big communication lift as far as, you know, communicating it to the employees.
Okay. Yes, Shannon.
And the department heads of the affected departments are all okay with it? With the new policy?
From what we know.
There, there may be employees that have routinely gotten 10 hours of holiday pay that would have some issues. But department heads have been informed of it and we didn't count noses, to be honest, but they're, they're aware of it.
Any other questions for Amanda or Greg? Otherwise, we are looking for a motion. Okay, thank you, Mark, seconded by Doug. Thank you. Any council discussion? Seeing none, this will be a roll call vote. Amanda.
Bill Leclerc.
Aye.
Doug Brand.
Aye.
Tim Petrie. Bonnie Shimulunas.
Aye.
Scott Stackmesser.
Aye.
Darla Leclerc.
Aye.
Mark Bitner.
Aye.
Shannon Derby.
Aye.
All in favor.
Thank you all for that. Onto B, resolution authorizing a refund of room taxes for multiple short-term rental properties based on duplicate payments made.
It just occurred to me, Amanda, we didn't get a call from Andrew Adams, our city attorney. He was going to join the meeting. Oh, he is here.
He's already on, yep.
You brought him on so quietly. Excuse me, Andrew, I just wanted to make sure you were there. Just hit me. Yes.
Do it stealthily to make it seamless.
Okay, very good, very good. This next matter pertains to a refund of room taxes collected for multiple short-term rental properties under the ownership or management of Bayton Properties Two Rivers LLC. I'm sorry, yeah, Bayton Lake Shore Properties LLC, who reported to us this fall, a situation where they'd come to realize that they had been remitting room tax directly to the city in basically in, in duplicate of payments that were also coming into the city from Airbnb because their rentals are all through Airbnb. Information from Airbnb specific to the properties was provided to Sally, our finance clerk who deals with room tax collections. She affirmed actually the, the dollar amounts that had come in from Airbnb were consistently higher than what had been remitted by Bayton Lake Shore Properties because apparently they were not, they, Bayton, were not charging room tax on things like cleaning fees. It was a misunderstanding there. So, so it does appear these were double booked. This is for the period 2020 to 24, five-year span. Back in 2020, it involved two properties. That list of properties had grown to six by 2024. And the total duplicate payment or overpayment, if you will, that was identified with the spreadsheets that were worked up in finance totaled $31,210.91, as noted in the resolution in front of you. The city attorneys were consulted on this because I wasn't sure frankly, is this a room tax commission matter? And the room tax commission was advised of this because a refund like this does affect your fund balance. But Andrew can speak to it. The, the thought was it is the council that created the room tax ordinance and authorizes the collection of room taxes. So a refund ought to be recognized or ought to be acted on by the city council. So this will be handled as a credit against room tax revenues as opposed to an expenditure out of the room tax fund. We have had discussions, not of changing the ordinance, but of changing language in the annual report that we ask each of the local room tax paying entities to file, indicating that the city will not be responsible for going back more than one year. That wouldn't take away the discretion for the council to look at situations, but I, I think as a matter of course, we just as soon avoid situations like this. Far and away, I, I've looked at the numbers for this year so far. Most of our funding associated with individual vacation rentals comes in from the online platforms. I think the, the total year to date this year was under 13,000 out of 285, 285,000 or so that had come from individual vacation rentals remitting room taxes. So that is, that's what's in front of you. It would authorize this refund. The check has been processed through finance, but I've had them hold it while we further looked into this as to the proper action. So that's, that's in front of you now.
Any questions for Greg? Yes, Mark.
A couple of questions and a couple of comments, too. This has happened over a five-year period. But I talked to Joe earlier today. We are going to take it all out of this year's current room tax fund. Five years' stake will be.
Right. Well, Joe can feel free to speak to it, at the mic, if you would, if you're going to speak to it. It effectively impacts fund balance. If I'm recalling, we had 135,000 or so fund balance until this hit. So.
But we're having a good year with a positive increase.
Right. But yeah, you're right. This is, this is reflecting multiple years of overpayment.
So with that adjustment, adjustment, Mark, sorry, we're projecting 133,000 for a fund balance at year end. And pre this adjustment, we were well, well above budget. I think we're about 6% above what our budgetary goal was. So with strong November, strong December, as we've been trending, we're probably looking at hitting our budget or staying right, even with what we had hoped for the budget to be for room tax for 2024.
So revenues will fall, sure, but overall, the budget in terms of revenues, less expenditures, we're holding our own. Is that what you're saying?
Firm information, the 31 is the gross number. We're only going to take 70%, right? That's the 21, 2, or whatever number that is.
That's a good point. 30% impacts the city because 30% gets transferred to the general fund. Good point.
Next. So plan.
Yeah, Weston Dunn is currently working on a paragraph for us that will include in our year-end report that goes out to all room tax, sorry, not room tax, short-term rental operators and owners. When we give them the recap on how we did for the year, that'll be included in that as well.
I want to share a thought, too. I, I'm concerned that this happened because I know that the marketplace providers are reluctant to provide an exact breakdown of the individual properties and the time and the dollars. They give us a gross sum and it's our responsibility to try to figure it out. But I learned, and speaking to Joe, that the individual property owners receive a report quarterly with the breakdown of their individual properties with the amount of taxes collected from individual properties. And if that's the case, I'd like to suggest that we mandate the licensed people to provide us quarterly with that statement if we can't get it from the marketplace providers.
So, Mark, I can speak to that. Over the last couple of months, we've been doing quite a bit of research in how other communities are trying to get this information from their short-term rental partners. So we've been coming across a couple of communities. Middleton, Door County have created a model where they're essentially our short-term rental owners, operators are self-reporting with that. I don't know what the dynamics would look like or how we would go about enforcing, you know, reporting based on the application or renewal or, you know, I mean, I, I don't have an answer moving forward on that, other than I think we're all in agreement that it would be great not only to get a lump sum payment on a quarterly basis from the marketplace, but then have a succinct breakdown of how did we get to that dollar amount each quarter? And in last week, in visiting with Wisconsin Hotel and Lodging Association representative, their feeling is the exact same as ours. They would like to see that as well. And they're working on their end to see if they can get the state of Wisconsin to maybe beef up the legislation around that so that that becomes more of a requirement and probably would help all municipalities that are dealing with these same questions.
All I'm saying is if the online providers are giving this to the individual property owners, the report, and that's how this guy went back and traced the history and saw the overpayment proved this to our satisfaction, that he in fact did overpay, if that information is available in their owner's hands.
That's, that's a good question. Could we mandate, while, while the state didn't mandate in, in the statute that Airbnb and the other online platforms report that information when they make their payments to the city? And I, Andrew, I don't know if you have any thoughts on this, but I understand your question is can the city say, look at individual vacation rental owner, you know what Airbnb is collecting on your behalf and what they're collecting in room tax? Can we mandate that that information be supplied from those individual, I'm sorry, from those individual property owners to the city?
Shouldn't that be supers?
Probably good. It's something I would need to look into a little bit further. But, but yeah, that, that's a, that's a bit of a novel approach. And, you know, the requirements on the marketplace providers are, or rather, I should say, the, the requirements of municipalities in regards to marketplace providers are a little bit strict in, in that municipalities can't really force them to do a lot. But, but as for the, the people offering the properties, yeah, we, we, that might be something that we could do.
Can we supersede state law? Because state law doesn't force them to do that. In fact, they don't have to.
Forcing their clients, their client properties to do it. And I, I think.
Yeah, my understanding is we wouldn't be asking the marketplace providers to do it. We would be asking the property owners.
Who have licenses in our city.
License allowing them to rent these short-term rentals. The, the license would require them to report, you know, when they're rented and what's being tracked, that kind of a thing. So am I understanding that correctly?
Yes. That's a transparent circle of honesty and a solution for us so this doesn't happen again. And the lobby is.
I, I think that could be possible. Again, I would need to look further into it. But I, I think that would be possible because it's, you know, it's a report. It's not, it's not actual payment of the tax or something like that. Yeah.
Yeah, if, if there's clear statutory authority to do that.
Back to us, that would be a solution for this whole problem.
Yeah. That's a darn shame, frankly, because you know, with two keystrokes, any of these entities could supply this information. But they got their way when the legislation was written. And it's, it's kind of horrifying in a way. I mean, the bulk of our room tax revenue comes in from the online platforms and it comes in big quarterly checks with no detail whatsoever as to where, what properties it came from. And that's the frustration you've heard, I assume, Joe, in, in the industry. Everybody else is in the same boat. Everybody else is in the same boat.
Every municipality that we speak with about this, they would all like to be able to, to get this information and ultimately everybody wants to be able at the end of the fiscal year reconcile those numbers. And then when we think about how do we move forward and how do we utilize our room tax revenue to help grow our tourism industry, understanding the sector and where we're drawing revenue from would help us do a better job of deciding how do we go about marketing to new audiences? How do we increase those audiences and be more strategic with it? So more information would be welcomed in that regard.
I will, I feel I should point out as the attorney here, we've gotten off topic somewhat on the agenda. So we should probably not take further action on this. Great discussion, but we should probably get back to item B here.
It's a matter for the attorney to research and report back on. Thank you.
So I just want to make sure I understand this right. I'm not opposed to giving them the refund because it is an overpayment, but I also want to make sure that it is truly an overpayment. I'm not sure how Airbnb's report this. I get it, it's on the online platform, but seeing they paid it makes me think that they possibly also increased their fee on renting the Airbnb to cover this. I mean, somehow they got to be pulling that percentage back out, just like when you go and rent a hotel room, it's here's the price of the hotel and then here is your tax on that. So if they do it as an all-inclusive way, was his price already inclusive of this tax? So did he charge his people, assuming he was going to pay this percent back to the city? Does that make sense?
That I don't know.
So I guess before I would be comfortable doing that, I would want to make sure that he didn't have a set way of charging this room tax. So in other words, if he normally charged a hundred but said, hey, this is all-inclusive, we're charging a hundred and seven a night, was, is this baked into the price that way?
Just to comment on that from a legal perspective, he would, this would be something separate from, so whatever Airbnb receives, whatever the marketplace provider receives, they're providing the room tax based on the amount that they receive. So if you're thinking he collected it some other way, it would have to be outside of the collection from the application.
Does he base his, his Airbnb price as all-inclusive to that room tax is what I'm trying to get at? Seeing he, he paid us.
The room tax, you know, you can charge the customer the room tax. So you can, you know, the charge can be a hundred and seven percent. If the room tax is, I'm forgetting now which amount of the room tax here.
Ours is eight percent, if that helps.
Eight percent. So you can charge that hundred percent of the room plus the eight percent of the room tax. That's, that's how you can, I mean, that's how anyone can charge anything. So if somebody didn't do that, if they charged the, you know, a hundred percent of a room, it would actually, you'd have to take the room tax out of that. What they actually ended up charging for the room was that, man, I can't do that math, but ninety-two percent or whatever, because you can't get taxed on the room tax that you charge.
Right, I understand that, but I'll go off my situation. When we, when we do vending out of a machine, the price includes Wisconsin sales tax, we figure it in. So when you buy a soda out of a vending machine, it's already incorporated into the price. I'm trying to get at, was this incorporated into the, his rate for renting out the Airbnb? It kind of sounds like it is because he paid it. Otherwise, why else did he pay it? If he, if he knew that Airbnb was charging it, why did he pay it?
So that, so he, the rate that he's charging, it doesn't matter whether he's thinking that he incorporated an amount into it to be room tax or not. What he owes for room tax is eight percent of the amount he receives for renting out the room. So whatever he charges, if he thinks that he's charging eight percent more in order to get that room tax, then great, he managed to charge eight percent more. But him paying it on top of what Airbnb pays means that the city's getting, you know, sixteen percent or whatever instead of eight percent, which the city doesn't impose as its room tax and couldn't impose.
No, correct, but did the customer then get hosed on paying sixteen percent?
Just having the customers pay, it would just be the customers paying eight percent more and I, I mean, it's not, he can, he can charge what he wants for his rooms and if customers will pay it, that's what the market has decided.
I think the customer probably, I don't know if it's, if it's like any hotel or lodging bill, I've only used Airbnb.
I haven't either, that's why I'm asking, because I don't know.
Usually it's added onto the bottom line if this gentleman was assuming, well, I've been paying this, like I keep paying it based on what they were charged. I, clearly for, for five years, the online platform was already collecting that and turning it over to the city. If, you know, if this is something, because I want council to be comfortable with this, you know, if this is something you'd want to maybe have the, the applicant sit down and talk it with personnel and finance or something and go, go through the rationale or have staff follow up, we can do that.
No, I mean, I think it's, I just want to make sure that that was crystal clear, that that he was not, I want to make sure that he wasn't including it or charging it somewhere else and having the customer pay it twice. Because essentially that, that too pays the room tax. It's not, it doesn't come out of their money, it's included, it's being paid for by the customer.
If the marketplace provider, though, is the only person that even sees that customer's money, Adam, and he, this other guy, when he's independent, he doesn't see it if it goes through the marketplace. If you ever use online services, you'd understand that. It's not like vending, it's, it's different thing.
Is the tax a line item on VBR or whatever?
Yes.
So it's right on there telling you.
Yeah, it's just like a hotel. You reserve the room for two hundred dollars a night, there's a cleaning fee and then there's the. Oh, it's clearly a separate line item and there's no way he can. Andrew said, you know, good for him for getting a higher rate than he normally would.
Plus he was like somehow coming there with like a credit card reader and charging a random amount separately. Like that's, if that's what you're saying, then I could understand it, but.
No, I mean, I'm not making it, I'm not making any claim or assertion. I'm just trying to figure it out because I don't use this service. I don't do anything pretty much online like that. So I, I'm just trying to figure out how it's done. I know it's done in a hotel, I've been there. I don't know how they do this, that they double pay because you don't get that from hotels, they don't double pay, so I'm trying to figure this out. Because I know they also use online platforms, whether there's all sorts of them. So I guess I'm trying to figure that out.
The, the way that the market, these marketplaces work, it, it would be, they charge the customer, they take their cut, they take the taxes and pay out the taxes and then they provide the owner with their, whatever the remainder is. That's, our understanding is that that's what the owner was then taking seven percent of what, or eighty percent of what he received at the end there after taxes have been taken out and then giving it to the city.
Okay.
Oh, gotcha.
That makes more sense.
Out adding in the extra fees, typically cleaning fees. Now, that's not right. You're, well, that's a bit of a gray area, isn't it, Andrew? But.
Ben, I would, I would argue that it wouldn't be correct to, that all those fees would need to be included and that's what Airbnb does. But yeah, there, there hasn't been a Supreme Court case on that one yet.
And then I guess the only other thing that I had there is the impacted general fund. So is that going to be about, it's to be right around nine thousand?
Nine thousand dollars.
And that's going to come out of this year's general fund?
That would affect this year's general fund revenue.
And even though it's not a huge dollar amount in the grand scheme of things, how does that get made up? Does that, is that going to require spending less somewhere or?
A little, little late for that.
Right.
It's for twenty twenty-four.
Because we've passed the budget.
Well, and this is, yeah, and we're at the end of the fiscal year that this impacts because this is twenty.
Some funds left on the budget, we used it all up here, didn't we?
I'd have to check because I think we, I think our revenue has run a little ahead of the budget. I don't have those numbers, but clearly thirty percent of this number, say ninety, three hundred dollars is an impact to the general fund.
Four years, we can wait, you can wait till next year to get paid, Andrew. If it's not for us.
If you want to make that part of the direction, sure.
We're gonna, we're gonna receive some money, though, from, from.
Well.
We may, I don't know for sure or not, but maybe that.
That, that's good for the money, the root, that gets spent out of the seventy percent. I'm, that's getting a little affealed, too. I don't want to, I don't want to get admonished by the attorney, but he'd probably be right. There, we did talk at Room Tax Commission about a potential saving on wayside maintenance, but that comes out of the seventy percent that goes to the, to tourism.
Honey, do you have something?
I just wanted to make it clear, I mean, for myself, that I just assumed that this payment back to Mr., yeah, would come out of room tax, but you're saying it's out of the general fund?
It will, but it effectively means the.
You mean first it comes?
There's been more money sent over to the general fund because room, room tax dollars come in and they get split seventy percent tourism fund and thirty percent general. So it has general fund implications for certain.
Okay. So it's not coming out of room tax.
Seventy percent is, yeah, yeah, seventy percent is, but thirty percent impacts general fund.
So you're taking this refund out of the thirty percent part or the seventy percent part?
Both.
Oh, both? All right.
Yeah, it's as if the, it's, help me out, Cassie, it's a credit against revenues coming into two fifty-nine where the room tax goes.
Oh.
So that's where like the nine thousand something.
Okay.
Like, did we budget to pay?
No, we discussed, you're talking, we, as a room tax commission? No, we, we talked about how it would impact fund balance and that's in, in the room tax, in the tourism fund, I'm sorry, two fifty-eight. So that, if you will, that hit on fund balance was discussed at room tax. Tim?
With a normal business, if you overpay your sales tax, the state will send you a letter saying, you now have a credit and you have to keep track of what you don't send them and they don't give you money back.
I see. Mike, and I'm sorry to put you on the spot, Andrew, but would, might that be an option here? I'm, I'm hearing that thrown out as, that's how sales tax works with the state. I don't know.
And I think it's something, we could certainly look into it. It's, I, I don't see why we couldn't. Certainly a different route and it would require more record keeping, but. You see that working?
I mean, that would mean setting up a little accounting structure that we'd go on over time, but it's doable. I expect it's doable. I know it's doable. Yeah.
Any other questions?
Yeah. The money's coming from the online platforms, Mr. Bayton never sees it.
Yeah.
So, I mean, it'd be kind of hard to say you have a credit, but the money comes in automatically.
That's, thank you. That's a good point on this one, yeah, because it's a different revenue stream from a different source.
Is it possible just to take the, and Joe may not like it, but is it possible just to take the whole thing out of room tax? All hundred percent, not split at seventy, thirty? I mean, we got a budget that we, we got a whole lot of legroom there. How about that? General fund got over?
The.
Would be easy. One does a credit for the nine thousand and?
Ah. Yeah, because I was going to say, you don't, you do have a statute, well, I'm sorry. The most the city is supposed to receive for non-tourism promotion and tourism development is thirty percent. So, and we've been, oh geez. I was going to say, for at least the last three years, we've been taking the full thirty percent for, I'm not prepared to give you an analysis on this, going back to twenty nineteen, we probably weren't taking our full thirty percent, but.
Yeah, anything else?
Lot of, lot of variations. If you, I came here tonight thinking this was complicated enough, it's gotten more complicated. If you, if you want to do a referral to Personnel and Finance, we can get together and I want to get this dealt with fairly expeditiously. I've represented to the gentleman that we would, but if you want to try, you know, dig deeper in the next couple of weeks, because there are some questions I can't answer tonight.
Couldn't we just tell the Baton that we're going to pay it back and we can give them the seventy percent on the room tax? We got the funds and the thirty percent, you might have to wait till next year, but we'll pay you that back, too, when the, when the money comes back in. I think we, I recall in the budget, we had some very small balance in that, but.
I can't tell you sitting here right now if we're, for the current year, coming in a little better than budget. Right about on budget, I think, for room tax, so I don't know that we're going to come in a lot higher.
Eight, four years, he missed it, it's, you know, obviously it wasn't too critical.
Might not have noticed. I mean, something new for him. You know, this is just one of those learning curves. Can we just say we're going to table it so that, so that Greg and Joe and Andrew can look at these different variations and then just come back to us and explain, you know, here's what we could do, here's what we could do? Because right now, I mean, I don't want us to say, yes, that we're definitely going to, we're definitely going to tell Joe this. We don't know what we're doing.
Right.
I mean, the Room Tax Commission could play the bank, I suppose, but I can't sit here and say that you should give the general fund more than thirty percent of any given year's revenue because that is contrary to the statute. So.
Or do we just send this back to Personnel and Finance? I mean, not back to, but send it to them. Personnel and Finance Committee.
I mean, there are things that you, you can table it, but often we refer things if it's public works, it gets referred to public works. I'm, I'm grasping at straws here, too.
Right. Right now. Or are we just table it and have the staff come back with answers to our?
Hey, if you table it to the January sixth meeting, it doesn't preclude staff from saying, okay, here's the situation, let's review it with Personnel and Finance.
Right, exactly.
So if you want to do it that way. Personnel and Finance, I might still call on you.
Would you be, would you be okay with that if Personnel and Finance dipped into this a little bit as the chair?
I guess it's all right, but is there, does this have to be decided this year? I mean, for purposes of bookkeeping?
I don't, I mean, it goes back five years, so I don't think so.
Would it come, would it have to come out of the general fund next year? Or this year yet? If it's not decided until January?
I, I.
I don't know if, if it was an over-collection, that's an auditor question, I don't know. It affects fund balance. I don't know, if, if it was an over collection, I, that's an auditor question, I don't know, it affects fund balance.
Discussion at the back.
Okay, if we brought this to a different committee or a different discussion, exactly what are we looking for? Are we trying to figure out how much was spent out of this, uh, twenty-one thou- or twenty-two thousand? In other words, how much was spent in the general fund and how much was spent?
Not where it was spent, I mean, the general fund gets in recent years and it's the most you can take, thirty percent of the room tax dollars. The question I heard was, is there the, is there an ability for the room tax fund to absorb more than seventy percent? There might be, because again, I, I don't remember in twenty nineteen and twenty twenty, it's in fairly recent years that we said, by gosh, the city's gonna take thirty percent, the thirty percent max that we're allowed to, so there might be, where I'm stuck here is, to what extent can some of this be, can the, can this, a straight seventy thirty split be modified? And I don't know the answer to that, sitting here tonight. That's the concern I'm hearing. So, yeah, again, if you wanna simply table, then it gets, it gives us the option, it doesn't preclude taking it to the committee.
Exactly, and you could, but.
I know Mr. Bayton is, is anxious to get, get it done, cause he's.
As would anyone, it's thirty one thousand dollars, I would be too. A chunk of change, but.
Yep.
Yeah, it should go to, uh, to Personnel and Finance, but they gotta know what all these different options are too, so I think that that step one is.
The staff, the staff time, I'm gonna go into it, I honestly.
I just don't want anymore to come out of the general fund than what it has to, that's my concern.
That's something you guys can discuss at that point.
So what I'm hearing is the goal is to, to reduce to the extent feasible, the general fund impact of this. Okay.
Let's table it to the.
Take a motion to table.
Thank you, Darla, do we have a second?
I'll second that.
Thank you, Bill. Yep.
We will, we will bring something back to you at the meeting on the sixth, two weeks.
Do we have a Personnel and Finance meeting before that?
Maybe.
Maybe.
Well, you're not referring specifically to that committee, but we'll do, we'll do our homework and then I'll reach out.
See what happens, if it has, go back to Personnel and Finance, it can, if not, come back to us, okay? Um, so we got the motion, uh, all in favor of tabling it, say aye? Aye. Anyone opposed? Motion carried, good discussion, thank you. On to C, consideration of a request to extend denwa- extend deadlines associated with previously approved facade grant agreement with the Wave TR LLC for twenty fifteen Jackson Street.
Yes, this is a grant that was authorized by council in early August, I think it was August first. That was the same agenda where the council also approved a, a grant from the Old Washington High School TID, I believe that's number eight, uh, ten thousand for the Wave TR LLC, which was for twenty fifteen Jackson Street, the former Crane Body Shop that, again, this is Mr. Bayton, this time in his entity is the Wave TR LLC. Uh, that same evening, you approved a ten thousand dollar grant from the same Tiff District to Pop Start Restaurant Group for, uh, their plans to redevelop, uh, the former Luigi's property. Talking with Mr. Bayton last week, actually on the first subject, the room tax issue, he said, you know, I'm, I've still got some work items, I'm not gonna, uh, complete by the year end deadline on the facade grant and I, my response was sort of, oh shoot, I'd forgotten that was year end, yes. And, uh, I said, well, I will take it to council Monday. I know you take some, uh, criticism for extending these deadlines, but we've run out of weather and this would be treating this one in the same manner as several others have been treated this year and what I've suggested, because sometimes spring doesn't arrive much before the first part of May, is taking the deadline for completion of the work, which was December thirty-one, twenty twenty-four, extending that to May thirty-first. The deadline for submitting the necessary documentation for reimbursement by the city, a month later, it was January thirty-one, twenty twenty-five. Extend that in like manner to June thirty, twenty twenty-five. Yeah, Mr. Bayton does sit on the Two Rivers Main Street Board, as has been noted in social media. This is not being, some of the facade grants are funded through Two Rivers Main Street, half of the, uh, oh goodness, the one for the Cuba property on Washington Street this year, that's a five thousand city, five thousand Main Street.
Has to be in the bid district for Main Street to.
But just, just as point of information, this one is funded by the city from that TID. The Design Committee of Main Street does review by council direction, all of the facade grant applications, uh, including those that are outside the bid district and not funded by Main Street, however, uh, this individual does not sit on the Design Committee. He does sit on the Main Street Board, that is, uh, a matter of fact. And there have been past members of the Main Street Board that have gotten actually Main Street funded facade grants, uh, but, yeah, but, uh, what's the word I'm looking for, abstained or recused themselves on those matters, so. Uh, all I'm asking for tonight though is, uh, an extension on a previously approved grant.
I'll make a motion to extend the project completion date to May thirty-first, twenty twenty-five and extend the filing documentation for reimbursement to June thirty, twenty twenty-five.
Thank you both, any council discussion? Yes, Adam?
I think it's consistent with what we've done, I think it's, like Greg said, you, you run out of weather, you, you run out of weather here and you, you, you just don't know, these people are sticking a lot of money and a lot of time into making their buildings look nice, I think this program has worked wonderfully for doing so. Uh, I think previous to this, there hasn't been a lot of work on buildings and when we started, uh, getting these grant opportunities out there, uh, we've seen a lot of people stick a lot of money into their, into the outsides of their buildings and really improving the way they look. And I don't think he intended to run out of time, he, he just ran out of time and it happens.
Yes, Mark?
Point number five does have, wasn't it? Back to council?
Mm-hmm. Yep. We're done? Yes, Bonnie?
I just have one thing on point number five. Um, the last sentence, I, I don't know how important some of this is, but shall have not obligations, you probably wanted to say shall not have.
Yes, I think that was an error.
And they do have their permits in the window, I went, I went by, by both of them, I, to make sure I knew what property it was.
Good, thank you for noting that.
Anyone else? Also, this will be a roll call vote, Amanda?
Tim Petrie? Banning Shmalunas?
Aye.
Scott Stackmesser?
Aye.
Adam Mahusky?
Aye.
Darla Leclerc?
Aye.
Mark Bitner? Shannon Derby?
Aye.
Bill Leclerc?
Aye.
Doug Brand?
Aye.
All in favor?
For ten discussion items, uh, discuss potential WIS DOT safety improvement project on twenty-second street.
Yes, Mr. Heck and Lival, over to you. Our Public Works Director for the viewers at home.
Thank you. I presented this topic to the Public Works Committee, um, earlier this month and at the request of the Public Works Committee, they asked me to provide, uh, a hopefully short discussion, um, with a, uh, general recommendation, whether or not we should move forward or not. In late November, the Wisconsin Department of Transportation reached out to myself, um, and they had a general concern about some safety, um, as they call it, safety hazards in the, uh, twenty-second street corridor from Monroe Forest to Lincoln Avenue. And, uh, being the first time I've heard, uh, that brought up, uh, obviously it raised some concerns and what they basically said is they have identified around fifty incidents or crashes in that corridor in a five-year period. Um, they couldn't answer specifics as to, uh, location, type of incidents and things of that nature. Um, so I asked our, our police department to provide some crash data, uh, for that corridor in a five-year period and, uh, to see if there were some commonalities and, uh, go from there. Uh, so assuming that the DOT's, uh, conclusions were correct, what they were proposing or are proposing to do is take the concrete streets that are presently four lane, two lanes in each direction and make it one lane in each direction from Forest to Lincoln and put a twiddle or a left-hand dual turn lane in the middle, um, thereby eliminating one of the through lanes. Um, so you'd have one through lane in each direction, at an intersection, you would have a dedicated left-hand turn lane and mid-block, you would have these twiddles. And, uh, they would do this as part of an asphalt overlay project and, uh, ultimately the asphalt would become ours because they would be now paving the asphalt over top of the concrete. It would add anywhere from two to three inches of asphalt into our curb lines, so reducing our curb heads from six inches down to three inches and all the handicap ramps in that corridor would also have to be redone. The good thing, if you wanna call it that, uh, is the construction costs would be all borne by the DOT as they are looking to apply for a grant on this, uh, item. We would be responsible for some unidentifiable, uh, design cost. So, also by doing this, uh, by adding these single through lanes with twiddle, we can also, upon looking at the uh, actual road width, include, uh, dedicated bike lanes on either side. DOT was, saw that there was the old school crossing at Jackson Street, so they were looking at including, um, RRFBs, uh, rectangular rapid flashing beacons, uh, because of the pedestrian crossing movement there. Obviously, the school isn't there, however, because it's in close proximity to, um, the Fishing Village, uh, they would say that would be a pedestrian, um, grant or pedestrian, um, accommodation for that area and they would still conclude to do that. Uh, so that's kind of the broad basis of what the background is. As far as, um, basically getting to the second page, what Two Rivers PD, uh, provided me was, uh, forty-six crashes in that twenty-sixth street or twenty-second street corridor from Monroe to Lincoln Avenue. In the table that I created, uh, four were at the intersection of Forest and Monroe. None of those were on twenty-second street proper. At Adams, there were a total of three, one was on twenty-second. There were twenty-three incidents at Washington, seventeen of those were located on twenty-second street. Washington, there were two with one on twenty-second, at East River, there were two with two on, uh, twenty-second, at Jackson, there were a total of six, five of those being on twenty-second and at Lincoln Avenue, there were six and zero occurred on twenty-second street. The, looking at all the causes, um, of these incidents, I feel that three might have helped if we would have twiddles in the, uh, constructed in that corridor and six probably would have been very preventable if there were. And some of those, the, the six that were most definitely could have been helped, um, are basically lane changes because we have two lanes in each direction. There were improper lane changes that resulted in a crash. If you only have one lane, uh, basically takes that movement out of the equation. Um, there were also additional twenty, uh, twenty, I'm not seeing that number off the top of my head, um, outside of the public right-of-way, um, and basically in parking lots and whatnot, um. So, a lot of the incidents, twenty of them, were outside of the actual twenty-street, twenty-second street corridor and some of the items that I saw as far as, uh, primary causes were inattentive or destructive driving, uh, improper lane changes or, uh, failure to check for blind spots, failure to stop, uh, bicyclists not following the rules of the road, uh, turning movements of large vehicles, uh, failure to year- yield to traffic while turning from parking lots and also failure to yield to through traffic while turning at intersections, excessive speed, uh, medical issue and ear- early morning flashing signals at Washington, uh, street in the early hours of the morning, right now the signals flash amber and red and if we would switch them to red-red, uh, we may be able to, um, reduce that incident by, uh, potentially three. So that is a broad stroke of, uh, what I believe the DOT is looking for. Um, I don't have exactly their mindset as to what they have for a final end product, but looking for some discussion and whether or not we should move forward, uh, with having them submit an application on our behalf or say, thanks, but no thanks.
How is it gonna handle the intersection over by the, you know, by the gas station and, um, Heck and Save? They have anything to say about that at all?
Again, don't have specifics, uh, this is all just conceptual, basically what I just mentioned, um. I don't know exactly what they have seen, uh, regarding specifics, um. The crash data that I received has been basically within the last week, week and a half, DOT has looked at this for a while pri- prior to contacting me in late November.
I'd be really interested to see what they have to say because it's just this strange, strange intersection.
Uh, primarily.
Especially if you go down to just two lanes.
Well, if, again, um, the eastbound movement would, would probably not change because you have that dedicated through lane, uh, going towards the beach and you have that dedicated left-hand turn lane. So nothing really at that intersection changes, um, and because east of Lincoln Avenue is not DOT's jurisdiction, they're gonna let the state highway, State Highway forty-two have precedence in traffic movement, therefore it would still remain as a left-turn no-stop movement.
Adam? Uh, for what it's worth, thanks, but no thanks, um, then there's a couple of reasons why. Uh, one is concrete lasts longer, it wasn't that long ago that we just redid that street and the taxpayers along that street paid for that and that's a road that we usually say lasts fifty to seventy-five years and the new asphalt that they're putting on there is not gonna last that long and they'll be paying for new asphalt to go in there once again. Two lanes reduces crashes, I mean, they're experts, I don't know, but they just put in extra lanes on Highway ten, adding a lane because they had crashes and now they're claiming that two lanes go down to, go from four to two is gonna reduce. So I'm not quite sure I understand that, but, and then the last one is just going on the incidences, I mean, twenty-six of them are on twenty-sixth street, they're the other, the other half are not on twenty-second street, um, and going down to one lane is not gonna improve uh, what some of the incidences were, including. And going down to one lane is not going to improve what some of the incidences were, including inattentive driving. That's going to happen whether you have four lanes or two lanes. Failure to stop, that's going to happen anywhere. Bicyclists not following the rules of the roadway. We get that on probably every road we have here. You see a lot of them even on sidewalks. Turning movement of large vehicles isn't going to stop it. Medical, early morning flashing, I mean, probably three, three-quarters of these accidents is, accidents, sorry, accidents are not going to be improved by going from four to two lanes. I don't, I don't buy it. So.
Was the grant 50/50?
Again, construction would be 100% D O T. The design, the city would be responsible for some quote-unquote minimal cost. Again, I don't.
22nd Street's in pretty good shape. I mean, I don't think it needs. Are you sort of? Flashing lane.
Bonnie? Hang on. Bonnie was next.
Okay. See, I think that people are using the lanes the way the D O T wants them to already. Like, if you're going east, usually people are getting in that left-hand lane because they're going to go left. And the people who want to go straight to the beach are already going straight. The only thing that I am wondering is how much are we going to get punished for disagreeing with the D O T?
I don't think anything.
What's that?
I don't think anything.
Oh, really? Like no future grants?
Can't guarantee that, but I mean, what this has brought to my attention, especially the flashing signals, is can we modify those? And that's a question I have in for D O T. Because that's on a state trunk, can we change it to red-red instead of amber-red? When the signals go into default, they go red-red. But in the signaling programming on a standard day, it's amber-red. And what we're seeing is people will stop on 22nd Street for the flashing red. The cars on Washington, both northbound and southbound, have amber. That car doesn't stop. The car on 22nd believes that they have stopped and believes that the cars northbound or southbound are going to stop. And there's a collision in the intersection, usually about 3:00 a.m. So if we can change that, that takes three out of those 46 crashes out of the equation. Inattentive driving, dogs running loose in vehicles, texting, excessive speed is in there. So as Adam pointed out, there's, there is incidents that we cannot factor in that are still going to occur if everybody were model drivers. We wouldn't need the need for this discussion.
Mark?
I agree with Adam about the asphalt. You're going to put asphalt on top of cement. That's going to increase the height of our roads. It's going to cause flooding. And I wonder how durable asphalt will be, those heavy-duty plows, and then how it's going to impact the curbs. Look at most of these problems, it's in. And costs.
Again, don't have an answer regarding design costs. Street flooding, that is one thing I really have not observed in the City of Two Rivers in my short tenure here. But.
Which is a episode.
You lose that three inches of curb, two to three inches of additional curb height. So could that play into a potential short-term ponding issue? Absolutely. To me, it actually raises a bigger question as far as if a vehicle happens to attempt to stray off the roadway, if they hit a curb, six-inch curb, there's the potential they'll bounce back into the lane of traffic instead of jumping over the curb. So that is a bigger concern for me. As far as asphalt durability, over a concrete street, it's going to hold up fairly well. But with any concrete or asphalt surface, if you don't have a good base underneath, it's going to reflect up through. Past knowledge that I've encountered is projects will have an overlay over a concrete base such as this. And as soon as a couple months to a decade, you might start seeing reflective cracking into that asphalt surface. We are then responsible for those long-term maintenance costs of the asphalt. And the primary reason that the D O T wants to go with the asphalt overlay is basically so they get rid of the illusion of the lane lines on the joints of the concrete pavement. So you have one smooth mat, and then you can paint new lane lines. In five years, the reflective cracking most likely will come through. And now you'll have the lane lines as painted plus the reflective cracking. Now which one do you follow, especially in rain and potential darkness? So.
Arla?
I like what Adam had to say. I had to look it up on Mr. Google. What's the difference, what the pros and cons? And it seems to me, I mean, maybe they want to go with asphalt because it's cheaper. However, you've got all these different problems that come along with it. And concrete is a lot better at, at being able to take the weight of different vehicles, the use of it. Durability, you're absolutely right. It's like 40, 50 years. You know, whereas the asphalt, I think that's, that's a Band-Aid. And then with maintenance, concrete requires less maintenance. Asphalt needs to be resealed every few years to prevent cracks. Cost, asphalt is generally more affordable. Installation, asphalt is faster to install than concrete. I have to disagree with that. It's saying in here that it takes like a week, week and a half for concrete to dry and settle. It didn't happen over on another project. It was only a couple days. So it didn't take a week. And of course, climate has a lot to do with it. I, Adam, I am totally there with you. And I, I still am, I would love to see a diagram of this because my previous question was when you get down to that intersection, what might be changed? And you said, we still have the road go, the left-hand turn lane and the straight-through lane. That's two lanes. I thought we were going down to one on each side. That's why I would love to see a diagram because I'm confused.
What I had said was one lane in each direction at intersections would be a dedicated left-hand turn. So basically, as it is at Lincoln Avenue, at each intersection. So same with westbound at Washington. So you have that dedicated left-hand turn and a through lane. So every intersection, you would have that. In the mid-block, you would have that twiddle.
I want to see a diagram. I want to see some sort of a rendering. I don't go to.
Yeah, remember.
So, well, basically Calumet Avenue in Manitowoc.
And the main reason, like Matt said, they're recommending asphalt is just to cover.
Cover.
Those seams because otherwise you've got a seam down the middle of the road and that typically is the divider. Remember, geez, I've been here long enough. I remember. 30 years ago, it was the design stage for the 22nd Street Bridge. The conventional wisdom then was the 17th Street Bridge is a local bridge. The day that wears out, which was maybe anticipated to within a decade or so, there will only be one downtown area bridge crossing the East Twin River. So you better build the Highway 42 Bridge, four lanes wide. There's a lot of, in hindsight, there's a lot of good arguments that could have been made design-wise for a different design had we known there was going to be $13 million in funding. Thank you, earmarks. Thank you, State of Wisconsin D O T, to replace the 17th Street Bridge. But we got a four-lane street now and it functions. And I'm sorry, you want to see a good object lesson in people not knowing how to turn from a four-lane street to a four-lane street any morning on Washington Street eastbound? I'm sorry, 22nd Street eastbound at Washington because half of the people turning right are going on a diagonal straight-to-quick trip. They hang a right and forget going into the first lane and then signaling to change. No, it's, it's virtually a diagonal from 22nd to quick trip. I, for what it's worth, I concur with what I'm hearing as a sentiment on the council. We might have a lot of things that are priorities. This just seems like a, you know, a possible solution in search of a, of a problem.
Yeah, it looks like, to me, it's like they were just trying to find a problem and.
I mean, H E S money is great when you really need it because it's 100% federal and state dollars. But I don't see a lot of good coming of this.
Well, and you have Memorial Drive, which is four-lane, then you have Downtown Washington Street, four-lane. It's nice that 22nd Street is four-lanes, especially in summer with all the traffic coming from Door County, coming down. And so people leaving the beach and people from Door County, it's just nice to have that four-lane and away they go. So, yeah, I'm in agreement with everyone else. Anyone else?
Everybody else, from what I've heard so far, I, I don't think I'd like the way 22nd Street would look with asphalt instead of the concrete.
Yes, Doug?
Yeah, I, I too, I don't like the thought of the asphalt paving. But I know in Public Works, we, we did talk about westbound, 22nd after Washington, that, I mean, driving in that parking lane is somewhat dangerous there. I wouldn't mind seeing. Parking spots in.
West, west of Washington Street, right?
Uh, like, uh, west of.
22nd Street.
Like Walgreens.
Yep, okay.
Towards Forest. People like to drive in that parking lane, thinking that it's.
Still four lanes.
When you get to Adams, there's very limited visibility, especially if you're in that parking lane, very little. So it gets kind of sketchy there. I do like the R R F D at, by the Fishing Village. That'd be kind of nice.
Anyone else?
So Matt, at this point, you'd be communicating back sort of a sense of the council is.
And just for note or record, my recommendation to B D or T B D, I'm on the same sentiment. So I needed to propose this. I don't, even though there's a large number of incidents, maybe nine out of the 46 may have been preventable with the implementation of a twiddle. To me, a lot of aggressive driving, inattentive driving, improper lane changes, which again, to me is inattentive driving, things that a twiddle probably would not handle or manage. A lot of them, again, were on the side streets, which don't help the cause either. So I'm in concurrence. So I will communicate back to D O T, "Thanks, but no thanks." If they want to give us a grant for the R R F B, great, but I don't see that coming.
It was certainly nice to them, for them to offer.
I will send that sentiment back as well.
I'm gonna take the money for a different street.
Right?
If we know of a different street that has a large hazardous concern, a lot of crashes, I'm sure they'd be open to it. But right now, I, without knowing all the crash history of T R, I, I can't think of anything off the top of my head.
The police department certainly hasn't highlighted any high accident intersections.
Very good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Great work session topic, though.
Yeah, absolutely. On to number, number 11, for information only.
Yeah, just a reminder of a couple of things. The next regular meeting is two weeks out on Monday, January 6th. And per council's earlier action and longstanding tradition, the lights will be out downtown on Christmas Eve from 6:00 p.m. to midnight. Get out there and look at it tonight. It's strikingly beautiful with the fresh snow. So.
Absolutely.
That's all we have.
Okay, on to number 12 adjournment, looking for motion to adjourn. Thank you, Adam. Second by Shannon. Council discussion, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion carried. Thank you. Merry Christmas. And the Packers are leading 7-0.